Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Baltimore City Council. My name is Jim Kraft, represent the First Council District. I’m chairman of the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. We are here this evening on a council oversight hearing, Council Resolution 150214R. This resolution was introduced on March 23, 2015. I’m joined this evening to my immediate left by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, the vice-chair of the committee.
Thank you.
To her left in the rear, Councilman Bob Curran from the 3rd District, a member of the committee. To his left, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, a member of the committee. To his -- in front of him, Councilwoman Helen Holton from the 8th District. To her left, the dean of the Baltimore City Council from the 5th District, Councilwoman Ricky Spector. To my immediate right, Ms. Marguerite Murray, staff to the committee. To her right, from the President’s office, Mr. Paul Plymouth and the Director of Legislative Services, Mr. Larry Green, in the back. Ladies and gentlemen, this hearing is televised on TV-25. If you do have any electronic devices, phones, BlackBerrys, iPhones, whatever, please turn them off or turn them on something that just buzzes, but don’t have them ringing or beeping aloud during the hearing as a courtesy to both the committee and to anyone who may be speaking during the evening. This resolution was introduced, as I stated, on March 23, 2015 by Councilwoman Clark and co-sponsored by President Young and Councilmembers Curran, Middleton, Scott, Holton, Kraft, Henry, Reissinger, Mosby, Welsh, and Stokes. And this resolution is for the purpose of convening a city council oversight hearing to assess the current status, proposed future direction, cost-effectiveness, and appropriate mission of Baltimore City’s City Stat program. Before we hear from the City Stat program, we will hear from Councilwoman Clark, the sponsor of the resolution. Councilwoman?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I hope you don’t mind if I read part of my statement. We know about City Stat Director Mark Grimes’ diverse other jobs, in addition to his cabinet position as Director of City Stat at a salary of $123,644, beginning in January 2014. We also know that the Domestic Violence Task Force and the Felony Gun Arrest Initiatives have not met since October of 2014, despite positive outcomes when they were engaged. We know that in 2014, City Stat failed to publish any departmental reports, held only 37 of the 240 meetings, sat as city budget targets with city agencies, and meanwhile increased its budget to $1 million. We understand that these concerns and the current state of City Stat are reportedly supported by the mayor’s office as part of a transition process to a more collaborative City Stat program. Learning the nature of that new City Stat program should be a goal of this hearing. It is crucial for us, as councilmembers, to understand. My goal, however, in these opening remarks and really in sitting here tonight, is to explain why we and the public should care what happens to the current City Stat program and how City Stat needs an infusion of updating. Because City Stat is where our 3-1-1 calls go for follow-up. City Stat and 3-1-1 are connected, and without City Stat in its traditional role, albeit however collaborative it may become in its demeanor, is crucial for accountability on the issues that the constituents raise. We all use 3-1-1. Our constituents call 3-1-1 for help. When they call our office, we make sure they also call to get a service request number from 3-1-1. It is step one, for which City Stat is the accountability factor. Step two, three, and four, working consistently with city agencies they oversee to validate satisfactory completions. On its own website, City Stat explains the 3-1-1 connection that is supposed to occur, and we want to make sure does occur more efficiently going forward. Under “City Stat Tenets: Accurate and Timely Intelligence Shared by All,” it says, “There are three main sources of information on which the City Stat process relies. The first is the 3-1-1 system. The other two sources of information are agency statistical reports, like how many people took overtime, how many people were absent, and field work.” The City Track Report says Baltimore has a non-emergency service request line, 3-1-1. Each service request is tracked from the moment it is reported until it is completed. City Stat seeks to ensure that each service request is completed in a timely, competent, and efficient manner. Visual evidence: Every City Stat analyst is issued a digital camera, and they theoretically go out, following up, to see that things that are closed are really closed as a further accountability measure stemming from 3-1-1. Follow-up: After each meeting with City Stat, the agency receives a one-page follow-up consisting of recommendations and specific data requests for the next meeting. This is on the website. City Stat is an ongoing process. Results are relentlessly pursued from one meeting to the next. I have recommendations. One: The city agencies that are going to City Stat should continue working with 3-1-1 and City Stat in collaborative updating of City Stat’s existing program to establish realistic 3-1-1 follow-up deadlines for all major serviced requests, listed complaints, and a schedule of timely, consistent, and collaborative agency oversight meetings. My great fear in all of this is that we are losing the accountability that our constituents and we depend on, that comes from 3-1-1, but depends on City Stat, to follow up and be the accountability factor working with the agencies. No one needs to be nasty about that. I love collaboration. I like politeness and civility. So if that’s what people are worried about, well, behave, but treat each other with respect. But part of the respect is for the constituents who have lodged a request or a complaint and expect that it is not lost in some shuffle of vague generalities. Second, I understand that we are going to -- and I’m sorry that our Budget Chief is not here, because budget outcomes are his wonderland, not yours, Mr. Raymond, the Budget Chief. And that we are to be more collaborative in looking at them, and we know what they are. They are generic things like better schools, safer streets, stronger neighborhoods, a growing economy, innovative government, a healthier city, a cleaner city. Of course, we want those things. But it’s not the same as saying, “How many miles did the mechanical sweeper go this week compared to the miles the mechanical sweeper was supposed to go every week? How many people were absent that required overtime in solid waste because they were injured in the winter storms and had to be absent? How did the storm affect that? How does that compare with the norm?” These are real things, measured in real ways, that matter and cost money. I’m almost done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your patience. Determine when the budget outcome add-ons, which looks as if that’s the new City Stat, will be initiated and how they will be staffed and conducted, who’s going to account for them, ensuring that such add-ons will not diminish the service request accountability, which is crucial to the agency-3-1-1-City Stat partnership. Three: Ensure access and transparency for the public through resumption of City Stat reports in this quarter. Initiate City Stat public postings on the status of priority categories of service requests. People don’t know that City Stat is connected to 3-1-1 and that it all goes together or nothing works. And finally, require that the City Stat Director devote his full time and attention to directing these efforts and addressing these concerns. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to read my entire statement. Thanks, members of the committee, for your patience.
Committee also received an email earlier today from Ms. Clarinda Harris, professor emerita at Towson University, who is also Director of Brick House Books, stating she is unable to attend the meeting. She wanted to express her hope that the Enoch Pratt Free Library System and particularly the Central Pratt be included in City Stat oversight. “Central Pratt’s current statistics concerning public access to materials, deaccession of many current holdings, with little planned acquisition of new books, public information and circulation are very poor in comparison, not only with comparatively wealthy major cities, but also with cities much poorer than Baltimore, such as Gary, Indiana, and even Detroit, Michigan. When City Stat is once again fully up and running in Baltimore, the Pratt Library System and Central Pratt in particular need to be under its purview. Sincerely, Clarinda Harris.” We will put that correspondence in the bill file. Okay. If there is no one else, then we’re going to hear from Mr. Grimes. Councilman Curran?
Oh, I’m sorry. You want to hear the presentation from Mr. Grimes first before you go into questions?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask that when you’re making your presentation, in keeping with the piece that you just read, the email from the professor, if there’s a point in your presentation where you’re going to highlight which agencies of city government do or do not participate in City Stat, if you could just refer back to that when you get to that point in your presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. All right. Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
It’s your show.
Do I wish I had it? Yes. You wish it more than I would. I’m joking. You know, there’s something about generic cases. Let’s try to get the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and distinguished members of the committee. We had a couple conversations back there while I was speaking to the agency heads who came to join us this evening in terms of when they would testify or give some of their insight. Why I thought that was important was, and even in Madam Vice Chair’s statement, there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding in terms of City Stat going away or rebirth, and that’s just not so. And I thought one of the most important things opposed to the speculation that’s been swirling around is how people actually use City Stat, right? Our big agencies who work every day, particularly over the past year during my tenure, and benefit from what City Stat does on a daily basis. And why that’s important to me is a couple things. One, obviously, the personal part of it is, obviously, newspaper articles or different things spouting out about what City Stat does. But more importantly is my staff. I have some very talented and capable analysts, highly educated and trained, who have spent the last year really having their nose to the grind and producing amazing results in the city. And that seems to me to be totally ignored, that City Stat is just not a amorphous dynamic that lives by itself and makes everything right. It’s human beings taking the time to invest in the city. And I’ll be quite frank, not necessarily with all the ideal situations that you would like to bring someone in and say, “Hey, I can pay you a lot of money,” or “Your hours will be short,” or whatever the case may be. It’s really kind of being prepared to adjust to the situations of the city. And that’s most important to me, and I hope that after this committee meeting and then also in your own time when you want to reach out to me, if you want more explanation about what exactly is happening in City Stat, that you’ll take me up on my offer, I think. Mr. Chair, you remember back, I think it was sometime in maybe September or August, I visited your office along with other councilmembers, Councilman Curran, Councilwoman Spector, Councilman Henry. In fact, Councilman Henry invited me to speak at one of his town meetings to explain what City Stat does. And so one of my first orders of business was to make sure I made myself available to the city council, because I knew heretofore, as a city solicitor sitting on City Stat panel, that there were some issues about the involvement and ways to get the city council involved in City Stat. So I made it one of my first orders of business to get on you guys’ schedules, so I could talk about ways that we could begin to facilitate a more involved presentation from the council. And I offer myself as a liaison for that very thing. And so while I sit, Mr. Councilman Curran, Councilman Henry, Councilman Scott, Councilwoman Spector have all taken me up on that offer. And I think we’ve had some good results in terms of making sure if I couldn’t answer the question personally and get the information, I conducted or I made sure that they had someone to speak to who could answer those questions. So that’s the tenor of what City Stat’s going to be, and like I said, I want to clear up the misnomer that somehow we’re waiting for City Stat to start back up. I have with me the Deputy Chief of Staff, who also not only advises me and helps me bounce things off in terms of what we’re going to do in City Stat, but also attends meetings. She didn’t come from a background of City Stat necessarily, but seeing what’s happening and what we’re going to do and what we’ve been doing, I think she’s an advocate now for the process, because the conciliatory behavior that we’re talking about, collaboration, is not a new thing. Chris Thomas Cuddy was talking about this back in 2009. Anybody who does or works with a big government or a big company understands that unfortunately people galvanize into silos, and those silos can’t function when you have, particularly a city where you have to move things day in, day out. It’s a living, breathing organism. And remember, I was a litigator for the city for eight years. And so one of the things that I know very well is some of the things that we don’t do as well as we could, but then there’s some other things we do exceptionally well. So what I’ve tried to bring to City Stat is a realistic look at how do you treat professionals to get things done? And personally, I haven’t found a professional that I’ve ever spoken to who wants to be yelled at to get accountability.
Well, tell us what you’re doing now.
Say that again?
Tell us what you’re doing now. Tell us how the programs work.
So here’s what we’re doing. Let’s go to one more. Okay. So I’m just going to give you some of the logistics of who we are, and then I’ll just go into some of the things we’re doing. So currently, we have four analysts, and we have one vacancy. Historically, there’s been anywhere from eight or nine analysts and down to five. If you look at the next paragraph in this slide, we’ve been operating from February to December with a fluctuation between five for a large majority of the time with three analysts, and then we went to four, and that’s where we currently sit. But despite that, other than meetings that had to be canceled based on weather events, for instance, when we have the freezing pipes this year or we have snow events, that sometimes contradicts or conflicts with a scheduled meeting. Again, the collaborative model says if your worker has to attend to something for the city, and you can move a meeting or you can cancel a meeting, you’re going to opt for city services. So for me to call the DOT in during the snowstorm would, in my mind, not be an effective way to conduct business, but what I will say to you, that’s only one small part of what we do. So go through the next slide. So here, Councilman Henry, as you mentioned, are all the agencies that we stat, fire, police, and within police departments, Police Stat, Gun Stat, DV Stat. We have the Department of Public Works, we have Water Stat and Clean Stat. We have Department of General Services, Wreck and Parks, Department of Transportation, Housing, Health, and Human Services.
Just want to interrupt you for one second and recognize the fact that we have a group of political science students from the University of Baltimore joining us and observing us. Welcome.
Welcome. And so just to take a kind of look at, when I said about the staffing and the diligence of the City Stat team, when you look at meetings missed, and let me back up a little bit and just kind of put that in perspective. There were some dynamics in some of the newspaper articles that spoke about 240 meetings. So let me clarify that. In the inception or beginning of City Stat, there was a bi-monthly or bi-weekly meeting. And so they had 10 stats. That equals 240 meetings. So Chris Thomas Cuddy stopped that back in 2010, 2011, because what he was realizing is that as the issues became more complicated, it took more time for the agencies to complete them, because it was no longer just about filling a pothole. It was the processes to do that in a more timely way. It was a process of making sure that you had the staffing to do that if you were going to put a time limit on it. So what he did, then, he began to go to monthly meetings. So monthly meetings have been in play for, as I said, several years. What I did when I came in was did another analysis with my staff to look at, well, if we’re going to start talking about systems and we’re going to start talking about things that need to be done and actually executed, how much time does it really take an agency to do that with your assistance? And we came up with a six-week process. And what that gets us is a more intense and closer analysis of what’s going on and how we can help. Because to have a high-priced meeting where you have folks sitting around and they can’t complete the assignment is not a cost-effective way to do business. And so what we’re doing is we’re having both sides be able to engage. If they don’t understand the question or the follow-up, they can call back to the analysts. The analysts can then respond, go to meetings. You know, my analysts not only do field work, but they also attend internal stats of the agencies. So it’s a very complicated process, and it’s very nuanced. It’s not just have meetings and talk about stuff and then solve a problem. So what I tried to do based on some of the responses, or at least some of the comments out there, is looked at Police Stat for one, and we missed four meetings. One meeting was no analysts, one meeting the department called because they were having the Ferguson protests, and two other meetings were data problems they had getting data actually out of their system. Gun Stat, we missed one meeting because we had no analysts. DV Stat, we missed four meetings. Three were data issues, and then one was, one meeting was missed because we had the transition of a new state’s attorney. We missed no Water Stats. We missed one Clean Stat. That was, again, because no analysts. We missed two Department of General Services transition, we had no analysts. Wreck and Parks, we missed two meetings. Again, analysts left us to another opportunity. Housing, we missed two meetings. We had two key agency heads asked to be excused or changed the meeting because they had conflicts in previously planned conferences or engagements. We have Human Services, we missed five meetings, we had no analysts, and at the agency’s request for various reasons, mainly because we were going through the encampment issues and also there was a new director being named. And Health Stat, we have a City Stat analyst doing internal stats, because most of their funding comes from federal sources. And, you know, we also understand that based on the data they collect, there was some concern about some of the conflicts under Dr. Barbeau, under Acting Commissioner Duval Harvey, and Dr. Wen and I have just sat down a month ago to talk about what she sees, her vision for the Health Department. So now let’s see what City Stat is doing. One of the most important things when we talk about collaboration, not a new concept, but what we’re focusing more on is being agency liaisons. What we’re finding in our work on unrelated matters is that there’s some things that could be fixed along the way in terms of, opposed to putting out fires. And Council Vice Chair, you said 3-1-1 is connected. It is connected, but it’s only one portion, it’s reactionary. 3-1-1, if we didn’t do anything until someone called us and told us, we would be shirking our responsibility. We also have an obligation to be proactive, right? And Director Chow is very engaged in that thing with Chief Ford and the director here are looking for ways to be in front of issues and not wait until a citizen calls to complain. One of the other issues that we’re dealing with is the data warehouse, and I’m sure everyone in this room has dealt with inconsistent information and data. And so we’re working with M-O-I-T to make sure that we’re focused on data validation. So when you get data, you can be assured that if Councilman Henry over there gives out a document and I give out some the day later, they won’t be going back to him and say, “Well, why is your data different?” So again, those are not highlighted issues that we talk about, but they’re infrastructural issues that have to be addressed. And I’ll just go through a couple more. One of the things that, and why Chief Ford and Director Chow are here, is they have some personal experience with City Stat engaging or facilitating a conversation about fire hydrants. And what we realize is that we could do a better job or be more responsive and proactive about a grease system that the Fire Department is deploying, but isn’t quite ready for rollout, has some things that have to get done. And DPW stepped up to the plate and made sure that information regarding inoperable fire hydrants are on a daily basis being conveyed back and forth from the Fire Department. So what they did is they took both of their systems, and they looked at it, and they reconciled the two systems, and we have now a better sense of fire hydrants that need to be repaired or inoperable, so the fire trucks don’t go to a fire hydrant that doesn’t have water, obviously. That’s pretty significant for the citizens and our coffers as a litigator.
So that was City Stat.
So the other thing we’ve been working on, and again, this is a behind-the-scenes issue that arose based on looking at some other dynamics, was our overall collection process, how we collected debts due to the city and what that system looked like and what the thresholds were in terms of how much we were actually collecting, who made a determination where that threshold would be. Are we going to collect as low as $5, or are we going to collect as low as $400? But with that work and in conjunction with DPW, you know, they’ve done an excellent job of beginning to recoup some of the monies that has been owing to the city, and that’s been something that we’ve been very proud of over at City Stat. But let me also tell you about some things that will never make the radar that City Stat does. We open the polls for election on primaries and full elections at 5:00 in the morning. We’re responsible for coordinating all the city services, opening schools, ADA ramps, all those things. At 5:00 in the morning, we’re in the watch center with the Police Department, making sure that in order for votes for the council and the mayor and the governor, that those polling places are open. And both of those issues have been addressed by the Board of Elections, and they’ve been very impressed with, you know, the assistance and us being there and giving them assistance. Other jobs that don’t come up for City Stat, we’re involved in the school construction. Part of the statute requires that Baltimore have integral involvement with the school construction to make sure that in the building of the schools that they had adequate minority participation, that we had adequate city resident participation. And so we’re with the help of other stakeholders, developing metrics and performance measures and other stats in order to make sure that we’re monitoring and making sure we have control, you know, or we’re involved in the process of building new schools for Baltimore. And I’m going to leave you with one more before I turn the page. Outcome Stat, which we’ll talk a little bit more in the presentation about what that is. Basically, is a merging of Vice Chair, your favorite topic, outcome budgeting, but it’s looking at outcome budgeting and the importance of budgeting. But it's looking at outcome budgeting and the importance of budgeting and allocating resources, but making sure that when people make comments or proposals, they have some quantifiable data to go along with it. And I'll talk about that a little more. Again, the analysts don't just attend meetings. That's not all City Stat does and it's been a heavy reliance on the meetings. While they do generate conversation, they do generate a lot of ideas and it's a very dynamic process. There's also the field investigation. And a field investigation can be anything from taking these photographs to ride-alongs. And, you know, my staff is always looking for innovative ways to make sure that they know or have a good sense of what that agency does. So that way, when they are making recommendations or they are doing analysis, it's with the utmost respect. And I think the agency heads appreciate that because they don't have to sit down and tell the person what they do in order for them to help their service. So I'm very proud of the time and the efforts that my staff puts in to make sure that they're well-versed in what's going on with the agency. So let's talk a little bit about this new coming of City Stat, which is really an addition to what we've already done and we've seen its work. What's crucial to remember is that City Stat is a process for management. And there's two training, schools of thought and two processes that occur usually in a City Stat dynamic. The first is performance measurement. And that's basically what you said, Vice Counsel, Vice Chair. How many 3-1-1 calls are we following up? How many are we getting? How many holes are we filling? How many trees did we cut? How many stumps did we remove? And that's one type of measure. What we're trying to do and bring to that process is we're also trying to give intelligence to the agency so they can manage with that information. Because if I just give you what happened yesterday, that's not necessarily going to inform how you move forward tomorrow. But if I give you a process that contains that data, now you can have a takeaway from that meeting where you're saying, you've now addressed the issue that I'll have to deal with tomorrow. So that's very important when you're looking at continuity of government and collaboration because even in those meetings, if I need to tell someone that, hey, it's best for you to reach out to XYZ, to DOT, then I can make that suggestion and that person can use that right away, right? We have people at the dais. If they have a legal issue, a financial issue, I get them and we get them engaged immediately so that agency can move forward and not be at the standstill or impasse they may have been before they came into the room. So again, that's not a, let's get started. We've been doing that and it's a continuation of the process of gathering measurements. Now you have to use it to manage. The mayor's vision is larger. It's not better. It's not, you know, I'm not trying to put a valuation on it. What I'm saying is she understands that if she doesn't move with where the city's moving, then the process becomes ineffective and you could have it in name only. You have to see where your agencies are. And what we've been blessed and we don't get enough credit for is our agencies are pretty sophisticated. I mean, this is a big city and there's a lot going on. So they're going to have some foibles and things that don't go perfect. But overall, if you look at how we got through this winter, if we look at, you know, innovations like the Fire Department using citizens to help with hiring, I mean, this is cutting-edge stuff. And those things have to be communicated in meetings and they're also...
Mr. Grimes, let me stop you a minute. What happens in a meeting? What happens in a City Stat meeting? When somebody comes into a City Stat meeting, what goes on? I mean, all this stuff is great, but, I mean, we know how City Stat worked. We know how it worked before. You know, where people came in, they reported, they reported, they were challenged on their reports, they had to explain what was going on, they did the interaction. Now there is quote-unquote, this collaborative process. What happens in a City Stat meeting today? Tell us how one, what goes on in one today?
Yeah, so...
How does it work?
Okay, so the original City Stat that you're referring to, if you're going back to 2000 and those earlier...
No, we know the original. Tell us what happens today.
Let me ask you a question, Councilman. Let me answer. And so at that point, they didn't give memos. They just, you had to just come prepared to talk, you know, about your agency. And so a lot of the more highlighted things that happened before would be, you know, they asked a question about maybe graffiti being moved and then a picture would flash on the board saying, well, how about this graffiti and those kinds of things? And so they would have that kind of dynamic. So you would always, and I attended them as a chief solicitor, so I'm speaking from experience. You would have someone on their heels kind of trying to respond to, well, the last I checked it was okay and now you showing me something you've seen driving in. I don't know what to tell you. Things happen, but we're cleaning up those things and they would try to respond, but it would always be reactionary. At some point, probably in about 2011 or thereabout, they went to giving memos out, meaning that you would give a memo ahead of the meeting. It would be kind of like an agenda. So those things that were either found in field work or they were concerns would then be, you know, you would just speak about those and the agency heads, the agency heads would then respond to those particular issues and then it would be follow-up on those issues. And so then at the meetings, you've had this field work, you've had interaction with the analysts on what they found, what they're suggesting. And then you would come and talk about, you know, what we like to call the story behind the curve. Like what's going on? Why are these numbers up? Why are they going down? Because remember, accountability is not just about finding an error or a mistake, it's also about duplicating positive things. If you found a way to reduce something, then I want to share that with other agencies that have like operations. So once they come in, we talk about it. We look at charts and graphs. That hasn't changed about City Stat. We're still visualizing, you know, the written word and we're talking about it in ways that people on the dais can understand because everyone's not a technician or firefighter or an operations person. So we make it so it's explainable and you can basically see trends up or down. And then we talk about it. We talk about ways to solve issues. And we also have engagement from the dais. So if there's an issue that's stopping some progress, that subject matter expert, an attorney, HR person, a labor person can then chime in and help that person get through that burden. So that's basically the dynamic and it's free-flowing. I mean, you have certain issues that you're going to deal with because that's the stuff that we've been talking about that we put in a memo. But then from that can, you know, it could be a derivative conversation that comes up because we realize that, hey, there's something missing here. And the reason why you're having this issue is because you need to tie in with this agency or you need to have better collaboration. So that's the dynamic of the meeting. But the meat and potatoes work is the stuff that no one sees. I mean, it's going into gathering and galvanizing and analyzing in a way that goes back to the reason why we extend the time, where the agency has some meaningful information to digest and utilize. So that's basically what a meeting entails.
So that's what you're doing now?
That's what we're doing now. And that's what we've been doing since I took over in late January.
So who makes the agenda?
Well, in terms of who makes the agenda, the agencies and the needs of the city make the agenda. We talk about things that are relevant to what's happening in the city. I mean, it's just like, this is an operation.
The one you referenced that now that you have a memo?
Yes.
Whose memo is it?
It's the analyst's memo to the agency.
How does it originate? Where does it come from?
From hard work. I mean, it originates based on...
No, I mean, how, where does the idea, if you're in a City Stat meeting, a situation DPW, okay? They're fixing pipes all over East Baltimore. All the streets are torn up. People can't park, you can't clean the streets or whatever, and everybody says, how are we going to fix this problem? So that's given to an analyst?
No, no, that's...
Okay, then give me an example. Give me an example of how something is identified and given to an analyst?
Well, it's twofold. Not everything is delegated to an analyst. So some things are because...
Well, we're using that right now.
I got you, let me answer, Council. I understand. What I'm saying to you is that there are some requests that come from the agency. We need help. For instance, I'm now currently working with the Fire Department on the attrition issue in terms of we have a lot of firefighters that are eligible to retire. That doesn't mean they are going to and we hope with the better schedules and all the stuff that the chief has been able to negotiate, it won't be a problem. But we're not waiting to respond to, we're not waiting to respond to the crisis, we're being proactive. So that's one way where we would get information. The other way is my staff and I have bi-weekly meetings. We just talk about the city. We just talk about things we see, things we know. And some of them we generate based on things that we want to get answers to or something that would maybe pique the interest based on looking at some other data. And that's the beauty of what's happening with my analysts having more time to digest information and look at it because now they can be a little more creative and they can start thinking about not only reacting to stuff, but innovations. How do we get ahead of a problem that seems to be reoccurring? So it's a multifaceted dynamic that, you know, you kind of live and drink it. And I think that's why I started off my presentation with how much they work. And some of the comments have been very dismissive of that process, which is very in detail.
Councilwoman Clark.
Okay, so let's talk about attrition. What did your analyst have to say about the effect of the pension system on the attrition in the Fire Department?
Well, I don't know if they had anything...
Or what do you think?
Well, I mean, we're dealing with it and so those are talks...
Well, no, 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 but what is your take on that? Your personal take on that, since that's something you mentioned.
Okay, that's a different question. My personal take is we need to develop a workforce plan that speaks about how we will deal with this kind of...
No, I'm talking about the pension, the F and P pension.
I didn't say pension, I said attrition. I don't, I haven't gotten to the...
No, 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 I'm talking about attrition.
But that's not, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
You're talking about people that are eligible to retire or not.
I understand your question, but what I told you...
So what, and so that was an issue where you're, you know, thinking about factors?
No.
What factors do you think?
Are you going to let me answer?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I said, what we were doing was we were looking at an agency that has an issue and we're figuring out how to deal with it for that agency and what's looming for that agency. It wasn't a conversation that encompassed the F and P and all. So I don't have a learned answer on what that should be or make a recommendation. Again, my training counsel, Madam Councilwoman, is as an attorney. I don't speculate on things. I look at facts and information and deal with the question in front of me. So I can't stand here and give you, you know, what the best solution or what. I haven't thought about it enough or done enough research.
That's what I thought.
What did you think?
I thought you hadn't thought about it.
Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Grimes, for being here today. I'll try to be concise as it can be. I'm only going to ask really a comment one time. I knew that City Stat in 1999 was an office and its goal was to make government more responsive, accountable, and cost-efficient. I believe that it has done that even to the day. I've visited the City Stat unannounced on many occasions and have been asked to, not be thrown out of my ear, but say, Councilman, if you have any concerns, please, we'll address them to you. And I usually go up there after a big snow event to see how transportation handles, what they did during the snow event. I know back in Snowmageddon back in '09, I was up there.
Yeah, Councilman, can you clarify the time that you got kicked out of City Stat? Was that during my tenure?
Not during your tenure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. It just seems to be a little confusion about that. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'd just like to, I mean, the elevator goods is the sixth floor, so I go to the sixth floor and I go up there and see, especially with issues concerning transportation and events, especially the Health Department, especially with animal issues, I'll go up there and hear when they have concerns on that. I've worked at your office and you particularly on towing issues this recently, last two months or that. But I have used City Stat, my office has used City Stat. And I'm going to give you an example. I mentioned I couldn't find it the other day. We were meeting back in '04. I wrote a letter to Matt Gallagher, who's the director at the time, concerning Police District, Northeast Police District, in particular Sector 2. I had a list of questions. Letter was dated August 17th. Question about the population Northeast District, number of crimes, the breakdown of calls, the priority, different questions regarding the staff in Northeastern and Sector 2 and Northeast in particular. And within a month later, he got me those questions in a memorandum form, in the form of memorandum that I've used. Obviously, that was time-sensitive back to 2004, but probably is going to be almost reflective of what goes on today up there in Northeastern Police District. So I will, we submitted the same questions I asked 11 years ago to you, Director, to see if the answers that you'll get back compared to what I did back in...
That's fine.
But I have used City Stat and the answers were able to help me to make a case for allocating more resources to Northeastern Police District. I know the Councilman Clark, Councilman Henry, other council members who represent Northeastern over the years have always known that I was always trying to help Northeast Police District. But I used City Stat's information that gave me the ammunition to do that.
Well, to further that point, Councilman, you know, you came up to my office and many times unannounced, which I welcome, but to talk about...
Well, I don't do email, that's the way I do things.
That's right, that's right. I was there and we were able to work some things out, but that issue you brought up with towing in terms of the unscrupulous charging of those bills from those...
Right.
You know, we've gotten all kinds of movement. They're reviewing the contract for next go-around.
I understand.
I mean, so based on, you know, your insight and your history with it, we were able to move that forward in terms of...
I've always had, my office and myself has always had good outcomes from the City Stat program ever since it's been aboard, even including the time now. But there is one issue I do have with the 3-1-1 and the accountability, and I mentioned in the yesterday meeting. It was issue up in my district, actually, the community association president, they're right across the alley from me, up in Northeast Baltimore. It's called the mile and a quarter alley. It's a long alley, it goes behind Northview, Eastview, Westview, Southview, mile and a quarter alley. Heavy tree canopy area, a lot of leaves that come down in September, October, November. And years ago, when 3-1-1 was aboard, the lady of association president had 15 or 20 bags of leaves on her apron, back apron. Everybody in the alley had 20 to 30 bags in her apron. She called 3-1-1. 3-1-1 came out a day later or whatever and picked up her 20 bags. And that closed that service request. Only problem with that is the rest of the alley had 1,500, 2,000 bags on it. So they do a good job in closing their requests. But how can we effectively say, well, we see that this house here had 20 bags in our apron of leaves? We picked up... Now, they've changed the process where they now come out on Sundays or Mondays, every Monday. So they have changed that process and they do allow the load packers to pick up certain number of bags when they do that. But then that particular instance, 3-1-1 closed that service request. Good job. But then there's still 2,000 bags in the alley. So how can we say that 3-1-1, we're going to close, we're going to fix it? I got this afternoon, I had a request from a business owner up in my district. I say, call 3-1-1 for a major pothole in the street in Hartford Road. Call 3-1-1. And I use 3-1-1 because I get that service request number and then I call the agency and say, can you help, you know, see the service request number is done? Because what happens with a service request number, I've learned over the years, you call whatever the service request is, well, that's closed. And the constituent calls, well, it's closed. Well, it's not closed. It's still there, but another service request is open. That's what the constituents don't understand, that they call and say, well, that service request I called is closed and the issue's still here. And it opens up another service request. So 3-1-1 has some tweaking to do and, but I use it for that, when the constituent calls me, I say, call 3-1-1, get to give me the SR number. Very valuable tool. I use that because that way the information that's relayed to the 3-1 operator is on the constituent and that relayed to me and I give a wrong address for something or a wrong street and the service request number is closed. But then it's another process how a service request number, calling for a pothole filled. What happens to that? That closes that and opens up another service request and when the constituent calls and says, that service request is closed, Councilman, but the pothole's still there. How does that work?
It leads me back to the comment I made earlier about collaboration. And one thing that Director Chow and a lot of the city agencies have been working on is how do we pass the baton smoothly? And how do we make sure that our communications between software are doing what they're supposed to do so me and 3-1-1 can also look on what's going on in city works, right? The actual systems that's used to follow work and what's been done. And so what we're improving upon and what people are very conscious of, because I have a meeting with Lisa Allen and Amy... Herbes, who is with DPW and trying to merge those systems so they can be more attentive. And the 3-1-1 taker is not, they're not going to call the agency, right? To find out what's happening. They don't call back to 3-1-1, right? That's where they originated your call. So we have to make sure that 3-1-1 analyst is well-versed enough to be able to say what's going on and what actually is happening. Because one of the examples that we found that if it's a call for trash in a neighboring yard, well, that neighboring yard may be owned by someone, so they can't just go on that property, whatever. But they can cite the person. So what's happening sometimes is that part of the function is being addressed, but the citizen is looking out and still seeing trash. So this disconnect on where we are, we have to do a better job to say the process is is twofold.
One more question, too.
Wait a minute, okay. Um, first of all, um, I'm gonna go to Councilman Holton, then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay? But before I say that, um, I did wanna note for the record that, um, Councilman Branch, who is also a member of the committee, uh, is ill, and that's why he isn't present this evening. So I wanted just to have that in our record, that, uh, so that it is reflected there. Okay, so Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, how are you? Kind of following up on my councilman, uh, my colleague from the 3rd District, and it has to do with citizens calling 3-1-1, lodging a complaint, seeing no remedy, and calling back to be told, oh, that complaint's been, been closed. Going to a format of City Stat every six weeks is a choice, but my concern is communication. So, councilpeople, we deal with constituents every day, on the phone, on the street, wherever. And there just seems to be a disconnect in how information is being shared.
I, I agree, and I'm gonna make sure I get on your calendar, um, Councilwoman, because I think you were out of town, or we just missed each other, but, uh, speaking to Councilman Henry and Curran and all, I wanna make sure, one of the ideas I had when I first came on, a reason for me going around to meet with you guys, I think you have valuable information in your constituent services. And I wanted to be a liaison with you where you can call me up. That's what happens with Brendan Scott calls me with the SR, um, you know, the Mayor's Officer Neighborhoods, they actually canvass neighborhoods and people complain to them, they send the City Stat in a, 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 a report, then we address the agency. So there are dynamics that happen every day, it's not just for the meeting.
Well.
It's, it's a continual thing that does happen every day, so I agree.
It is a continual thing, and the only thing I'm suggesting is, I mean, what I hear you saying sounds great in theory, but if all 14 councilpeople start coming to you with all the things that are not working in community, you don't have time to address them and get them fixed, and it's still not a higher level of communication that says, for example, um, we'll use potholes, that if each of us start coming to you with citizens who come to us who have called 3-1-1 about a pothole and the pothole's not filled, and we're bombarding your office with the potholes that aren't being filled. Okay, so you address that issue, but I think it speaks to a bigger issue of not necessarily just filling the pothole. What is broken in 3-1-1 that a citizen can call and be told by a representative on the city on the phone that, oh, that complaint's been, that complaint's been closed, and the citizen is riding over the pothole that has not been touched? Or whether it's the street being cleaned, whatever the matter may be, there's something that's, the dots are not being connected in a way that says we're all singing on the same page.
I understand that, and I, and I do appreciate your consideration for not bombarding the office with complaints. I know you guys hear it all the time. But what I'm saying is, um, the way that you address things in an efficient and comprehensive way is you try to get as much information you can about it. So while I, I respect the concern, I gotta, I gotta know from every source I could possibly pull for, because it's no different than them calling. We do surveys, um, for the 3-1-1 survey, we get inundated with, you know, people who, you know, wanna talk about their, their situation and plight. So what I'm suggesting to you, uh, Madam Chairwoman, is the back work that you're talking about, the back office work that has to fix the situation is going on, but it's a process. The immediate response, you have a constituent that's at your door complaining, wants an immediate response, and I would like you to be able to say, when they come to you, they feel that you have an ear and someone's responding, so you could at least, it's only one issue, but it's one issue that matters, is a person's come face to face. And so that's just a small step, but at least it's responsive, and you can feel like, and I, and I say this to the, to the mayor and to agencies, look, if someone comes up to you personally and, and makes a request, we wanna show at least we're engaged enough to try to make sure that one person is, is, issue is being resolved. And that's how you begin to change the culture, that now you have an advocate, which is a citizen, saying, I went to my councilwoman, she addressed my issue and got it, and got it addressed. And then you begin to change people's feelings about, do we care? And are we responsive? So I know that's not gonna solve everything, but, but it's those steps you have to take to change people's.
I wanna back up and talk about process and efficiency. And I remember in the early days of City Stat, now maybe we, maybe 240 meetings a year was too many, but I think that when the city hires an agency head, a bureau chief, whatever, they have a responsibility to be accountable for the people underneath of them and what they get done. And so rather than me coming to you with every complaint, it's bystepping a process. It's missing the point of efficiency of operations that we have as the city. My understanding and upbringing under City Stat was, if you have an agency head, at the end of the day, the buck rests there as to what's getting done and whether it's getting done in a, to a manner of satisfaction. You know, citizens say, and I pay a lot of tax dollars. Well, I pay a lot of tax dollars too, and sometimes it's the small things that make the biggest difference. And so me coming to you with a pothole is not as effective as when there's City Stat and the day is for DPW, to look at the mapping of, how many calls came in about potholes? And where'd they come in at? And light them up on the screen? And then you get to know, something's not working in this process around potholes, and to drill down to what, what it is. Is it the responses at 3-1-1? Where's the breakdown in 3-1-1 that calls are being, complaints are being closed and potholes not being addressed? Is it in the timeframe that we're telling citizens that potholes should be filled within 48 hours? You know, where's the inspection process that's going on when, when you say, here are the complaints we have that haven't been addressed? Because I think we all have things to do other than track down the pothole that the citizen has used the system in place that's supposed to address it. So I'm just looking for something, I don't care if it's six weeks or if it's every six days, a process that shows accountability for results, the metrics. You know, everyone talks about SMART goals. You know, what we're doing to drill down to is where's the weak link? Because we are only as strong as our weakest link. And so until we identify that, me coming to you with what's failed, in my mind, is not drilling down to where we're missing this 620,000 citizens in this city. Do we have time for 200,000 of them for us to funnel those complaints to you? I think not, and if we did, that would not be an effective use of our time.
So, so a couple of things, you had a lot of points in there, but, um, what I'm suggesting is not the way to eradicate the complaints or some of the things that are being worked on by the current professionals that.
You to talk to the mic, it's held on.
Yes, could you do me a favor? Can you kind of pull that whole podium?
The lecturing over?
A little bit, so people can see here. That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. So, so what I was saying was, um, for you to come through or any of the council people to come to my office for resolution is not the end all be all. What, what I was saying is, um, when I, when I met with Councilman Stokes, he said I was the first City Stat director that had ever visited him since he's been in, in office. And so what I was trying to do, again, in, in changing the culture, you have to make small, um, steps to rebuild relationships, or at least let the person know that the relationship is available for them to take advantage of. As, as much information that a, a agency head can get from whatever source is not a bad thing, it can never be a bad thing. And so while we're working on the system, we can still be responsive to the citizens who are coming for results today. And so what I'm suggesting is, and I know for a fact, because I'm in the trenches with the folks who are working on those things, is that there's always work being done on how to give better services to the city. Sometimes we fall short, and that's the reality of having such an enormous task, but it's not for a lack of effort, you know? And so what, what we're doing and what we're seeing every day is that we're chipping away at some of the deficits and some of the deficiencies, because we're having more conversations, and the conversation just doesn't come up internally. It comes up from third parties, it comes up from the council, and, and there's a, there's a plethora of information, um, that's going to the agencies. And I believe, and I'm comfortable with the people who are heading these agents, agencies, that, that they're, you know, they're working on it, and, and.
I will finish with this. What is the timeframe that you see that City Stat will be functioning in a manner that we won't have a need for these type of hearings to get clarity and a sense of what's happening with City Stat?
So, so what I would suggest or how I would answer that, um, Councilwoman, is, um, City Stat has been functioning, um, and I don't know who set that agenda or, or paradigm that is somehow in this domain, and I started my, my, my talk off with that. It is functioning, and, and, and the folks who took me up on the offer to, to ask any question they wanted about City Stat, um, the, the council people, um, we, we had a, 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 a good talk, they got a chance to say whatever they wanted to say, and I'm, and I'm.
We have a question now from another councilperson.
Can I, can I finish? Okay.
So we need to move there, but let's try to, if you can respond to the questions, uh, I think that would really be helpful, because we need to get through, where are we and where are we going? And we are going at seven at the very latest.
Okay, but I mean, that's, that's the point of, of the presentation?
Yeah, no, I know, but I think we are into what it's about here. Let me call upon my colleague, Councilwoman Spector.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, Madam, Madam, Madam.
Whatever.
Madam. It seems to me that I heard, and I think it might have been one of the corrections, and I just wanted you to share that if it's true. When the 3-1-1 calls went to HCD, for instance, and it wasn't, it wasn't a HCD.
Louder. I shouldn't say this, but.
When, when, this is what I understood was one of the problems. If a 3-1-1 call went into HCD for correction and it wasn't an HCD matter, instead of forwarding it to the right department, whether it be transportation or the help, wherever it needed to go, it was marked done. And that is where it fell apart in my office. And so I, I was under the impression that that was something that you, you fine tuned and you fixed. Am I correct?
Well, I would say that HCD has taken a closer look at how they, the nomenclature that they use opposed to putting closed, they're talking about putting work order completed or inspection completed, that's more informative to the constituents, so they don't believe, obviously, most people say it closed, they think they should look out the window and that trash should be removed.
That was the frustration. Our people would call and say, we waited the amount of time they told us, this is the number, they marked it closed, and so we would say, why did they mark it closed? And that, that was part of the explanation. But how did it get to the wrong department to begin with? If it was meant to go to transportation or go to the, to the, if it went to.
I can't speak to getting to the wrong department. What I'm saying, though, is HCD is the right department for violating a person who's, has the trash all over their property. Even if you're a vacant, um, um, homeowner, you're responsible for keeping the grass cut and the front yard clean. So there is a process that, that takes place.
For an abandoned truck.
Abandoned truck, you're saying?
Yeah, this was, and it went to HCD, and because they, they, they don't handle it.
It was closed.
But whatever, whatever, however it did get there, it was marked closed before it had actually been acted on. That was the problem for, for my office.
So.
And, and again, um.
If I can, if I can just interrupt, um, this seems to be a recurring theme, and this is something you might wish to address. It seems appropriate that City Stat would work with 3-1-1 on the issue of the whole closed issue. You can see, Mr. Grimes, what we are interested in when we're talking about City Stat. We are interested in the efficiency of the 3-1-1 system, which is step one. When that, when that is referred to the wrong agency and nobody knows what to do over there, when that's referred, it is marked closed, but that's a misnomer. It, it means, and sometimes closed means it was referred from 3-1-1 to the agency. So it was closed to 3-1-1, but open to the agency. Who would know that? No one. Therefore, here's a nice issue for your analysts. It relates to service to the constituents. Make them stop saying closed when it's in flight from 3-1-1 to Public Works or Finance or wherever it's flying. So that's what we, so, Mr. Grimes, we're practical cats here. We work with constituents every day. City Stat is a place where you count things and look at things. Look what happened during the, the Ice Age. Do you know what happened with the Moit IT system?
No.
It went on overload and just about blew. Now, there's an issue to look at. The guys that are out there digging holes in ice and running all over the region, chasing down, I got no water and I got a flood. So many calls were coming in that the people who were doing the work just got overwhelmed with input. Solve that. They're doing what they needed to do, but they were literally overwhelmed with input. So what we care about are things like that. Now, my colleague wants to say something. So the point I wanna make is, we want, no, 3-1-1 is, I mean, City Stat is not apparently operating hardly at all. We don't want people to be rude to each other, but we want a modicum of a, of accountability per the 3-1-1 slash City Stat, Stat system to continue and to be honored as such.
So, so one of my suggestions is this, um, I'll sit with you as.
And then I'd like to talk about the future after my colleague has gotten his two cents in.
All right, can, can, let me just finish one statement, but, um, what I'm trying to do is, um, explain to you really what's going on, and it seems like you keep reverting back to that City Stat isn't working, and so everything that you just talked.
You're telling us, sir, about, you're speaking in, excuse me.
Let me just finish.
I don't mean to be rude, but you're speaking in generalities.
No.
And we're, what, I'm not, and that's fine, you can do that in a minute when you talk about the future. But the point I'm trying to make is that my colleagues and I are talking in specifics about City Stat, and just, I think we just want you to hear that so you understand how important it is to us.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, if, um, Chief Ward and Director Chow don't mind, because apparently my telling you what we do is not sufficing, so I'm gonna have people who actually deal with City Stat and actually work in City Stat speak to you about maybe a couple of their experiences, so you can see that City Stat is working and City Stat is currently not down in a hiatus, um, so.
Um, no, wait a minute, hold it. We'll run the hearing. We'll run the hearing. Mr. Councilman Curran has a statement and for all.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, um, thank you, Mr. Grimes. First, I wanna say that your analysts or the folks that work for City Stat over the years are some of the most brilliant and brightest folks to work in city government.
I'm sure they thank you.
I mean, we now have our General Services Director, who was a former City Stat analyst, Sharkey, Andrew Vedder, who was with City Stat back in, in the Malley administration, now was with the Police Department as a liaison for the Police Commissioner, so very bright people.
DGS.
DGS, I know Sharkey. Now, here is a particular question, and maybe Mr. Chow can chime in on this. Let me do this. Okay.
I'll run the meeting. We need to hear from the Director, Mr. Grimes, about what the future holds after we have completed trying to explain what you are talking about.
Here's my problem with 3-1-1, or with the, the, where you close a SR number. There was a water main leak in the alley that is just north of 33rd Street, on Northwest Corner of 33rd and the Alameda. I passed it every day when I go to work for the last six to eight months. The water main was leaking, but apparently nobody lost service, so that's why.
It was, where is it?
33rd, Northwest Corner of 33rd and the Alameda, 33rd and the Alameda.
Okay.
Leaking in the alley for weeks, got repaired, and there was riprap, if you know what riprap is, that stayed on the ground for probably six to seven months, and I'm surprised that the folks that lived there didn't call, and it was not my district, so I don't, I wanna know, what's the process? Now, you open up water main break, you close, you fix the water main break, and then another agency picks up the riprap? I mean, is it not all water and wastewater? And that's where the disconnect is, the riprap stayed there for six, seven months. I wasn't gonna complain, I was gonna wait till it's done.
Thank you very much, and as, since that's in my district, I will look at the riprap.
Well, it's already gone.
Oh, well, there it is.
What I wanna know is, that's, what does one complaint, how does, you fix? What I want to know is, that's, what does one complaint, how does, you fixed the water main, and then what happens another, what corners opened up?
Yeah, so, so to that point, Councilman, thanks for bringing that. That's one of the collaborative efforts that we facilitate in City Stat. DOT has just taken over, and they've got a MOU in terms of street cuts, and, you know, that will be, make that process more efficient, because obviously, they're the ones who look at violations, and they're the ones who, you know, have, you know, a better expertise in terms of the street cuts and picking up the equipment, and they've actually gotten some equipment that they didn't have from DPW to facilitate that, so that's something that hopefully you won't be encountering again.
That's great. Councilman Henry.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Good, good evening.
Good evening.
I, I wanted, I wanted to let my, my colleagues have as much time as I could before we continued our conversation from last week, but before I do that, I wanted to check a slide. It would be, that's 12, I think this is Slide 6, it's the list of agencies.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm just curious, has any, so some of these I recognize as new, or relatively new. Are there any agencies or stats that used to be done in the past that have dropped off this list?
Have not.
Okay, so when, when you make reference to, in the past, under Deputy Mayor Thomas Cuddy, there being 10 stats.
Yeah, I think.
That were, that were bi-weekly, I'm looking at this list, and maybe I'm just misremembering, were there two being done by the Police Department at that point? Because I think of both Gun Stat and DV Stat as fairly new.
DV came later than Gun, right? So I think it's DV and Clean Stat, Councilman.
DV and Clean are.
Clean Stat are the newest.
Are the new ones. So there was a, how, so how old is Gun Stat?
What transpired was, the city wanted to start looking at more issue-based dynamics, where, you know, agency had to collaborate because it was an issue.
I'm, I'm just trying to get into, so there were two different stats for the Police Department.
Gun and Police.
Back when, so that's where the 10 comes from, so, because I'm looking at that list, and I'm looking at each of those agencies, if there just one stat is nine agencies, if there were 10.
Separate, I just put the Police Department in, and then I wanted to show you what was under the Police Department.
Right, so, so there were two different stats being done for the.
Gun Stat was separate.
Police Stat and Gun Stat for the separate, okay. That, the, the second one, and this kind of goes to the email that we received ahead of time, and I believe there's actually somebody here in the audience.
Mr. Yaffe has signed up to justify.
Mr. Yaffe is going to speak to this also, but in case I'm not able to be here for his particular remarks, I wanted to ask about the library and whether or not this issue has already been raised inside, in, inside the confines of.
Not for stats, so I don't, I don't know if this conversation is taking place with someone else, but not, I haven't personally heard.
So you have not been part of any conversations about the library being included?
I have not, sir.
That you are aware of right now, are there any agencies that are currently not stated that are under consideration by the administration for having their own stat moving forward?
Well, you know, I mean, one, one issue is, is really the bandwidth of what we could stat, but there's, I mean, people want to stat everything. I mean, I've, I've turned down Coat Stat and Hangar Stat, I mean, there's, there's different things that, you know, people want to put numbers and, and collect data on a bunch of stuff, and, and it's not physically possible with the way we're constructed, but what we try to do is look at issues, they may not raise to a full agency stat every, you know, month or six weeks, but their internal meetings, I mean, what you see on, on the sheet or what you've heard about as far as the, the meetings assigned are just a fraction of meetings I go to. I'm, I'm always in meetings talking about infrastructural things that have to happen and assistance we can give as far as giving data to resolve that particular issue. It just doesn't rise to a, a monthly or six-week.
And, and the bandwidth is a good, good point, because I'm also noting that you're currently down one analyst.
That's correct.
At four, so, doing a stat, if, if you're, if you're at 80%, then either you should only be able to do 80% of the stats, or you're, you don't need the fifth person.
Or, or we have a really dedicated staff that, that really works really hard to make sure that, you know, there's continuity in the process. I mean, that's, that's the thing I think that is difficult to, you know, in presenting this. There's, there is sometimes a positive side to something. There's, there's, there's a, an ability to acknowledge the work that my staff does to keep it going, where, you know, some people would, some people would say, hey, it's, it's not, you can't do it, and they've done that, so.
Which is, which is an issue that I think sometimes my colleagues will end up raising with the agency heads that you're dealing with, is that, and I say this in, I'll say in defense of the administration, but really in defense of the individuals involved, we, we, we spend a lot of time talking about when we're complaining about stuff that isn't getting done, but we also are cognizant of the times when the stuff that gets done, gets done because, as you're describing, people step up. And what we're sometimes looking for is, we're looking for help and support for them so that they're not going to be required and expected to continue to step up indefinitely. And this, this part of the conversation will probably transcend your particular situation and move into the budget hearings when, when those start up in the next month or so.
Just finish on that note, Councilman, because I think you made a, a, a very valid point, because not only is it identifying that people are working very hard, but those people know people. And so now you, when you talk, talking about people wanting to come in and, and do their public service, want to be a part of helping the city, it, when, when the people are here and not getting any knowledge, you don't build a nice farm system or, or emotional marketing of what it's like to be in this dynamic. This is the first time some of what my state analysts do has ever been talked about.
Okay.
And that was the whole purpose of me coming to individual council people to kind of give you some.
Which is, which is, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, one, just, one more. The, and so let me, let me take this back to, and I'm honestly not sure whether or not this was my colleague from the third or my colleague from the eighth, but it's in that, speaking towards that collaborative effort, that I want to put in a pitch for council people participating directly in City Stat. And I, you know, we've talked about your willingness to have us go through you, which I know is appreciated in terms of what you're willing to, you know, take on in, in, in putting yourself in that role, but as, as we discussed before, and as I'll, I'll say again here now, I have participated in meetings that were, for, for all practical purposes, a duplication staffing-wise of meetings that had already happened or were scheduled to happen at City Stat, in terms of the staff people from the agency that I needed to pull together to ask questions about work that had happened or had not happened. Those people were already coming together every six weeks in the context of City Stat. And while I know that oftentimes this, this building is not necessarily the least contentious one on the planet, in, in one very big and important sense, we are all part of one team in trying to make the city a better place for our residents and our constituents, and I think that there is an adversarial underlay that goes towards a lack of desire in having council people sit in on City Stat meetings. And I have heard lots of reasons for why council people should not be allowed to attend, and what I would say in response is, much as I occasionally say to the members of the Law Department who show up at hearings, is, instead of telling us the reasons why this can't happen, let's work on how can it happen in a way that addresses the concerns that you have, but addresses the concerns that we have? Because at the end of the day, no matter how nice your presentation is and how convincing or compelling your words may be, it's going to be hard for us to go out into the world and be the ones by ourselves at community meetings, standing up, defending your new way of doing this, and then having to admit that we haven't actually seen it ourselves because we're not allowed to be there. That makes it really hard to sell from an open and transparent government kind of thing that the people that they are electing to represent them here in this building aren't allowed to sit and watch it themselves.
So, so I understand that, Councilman, and.
So, Mr., can we, we don't have much time left, and unless you're ready to welcome us all to City Stat at this moment.
Okay, well, we can move on.
I thought you would want to move on, but I appreciate my colleague's pitch, and if it helps any, I promise I won't be one of the council people that comes up to sit in.
You, you would be welcome.
I'm, I appreciate that. If I'm welcome, then all my colleagues are welcome, so does that your way of saying?
Said you would be welcome.
Excuse me?
If it ever happened, you would be welcome.
If it ever happened. Now, there's a couple things that we need to talk about besides the fact that a lot of work, we believe, needs to be done with the existing program, at least to acknowledge its importance. Now, however, we've spent this past year in a, a bubble of anticipation over a transformation to a more collaborative something. And one of the concerns that I have personally is that whatever effort we are putting into City Stat now, City Stat as we know it, that backs up 3-1-1 and, and the down-to-earth issues we deal with every day, will there be, with your four analysts, talented and hardworking as they are, the capacity to take on a new hybrid in addition to keeping the traditional model going well? What is it that is going to happen? What is this new, this hot, this emerging City Stat, and how will it be staffed? And, and just, if we could be specific, what is it? And how will we staff it?
Okay, so first, let me start by saying, there is no new iteration of City Stat, and so I don't know how many, you know, ways to put that, but what we're doing is, we're trying to use the philosophy of collaboration across the board, and everything we do is going to, is going to have a connection to something else. Fire is going to be connected to DPW, police are going to be connected to fire, something as simple as in Clean Stat. When you cut high grass, you make it safer for an officer to see if there's someone in a special high.
We get it. We get that. Everything's connected.
So, okay, so therefore, the thing that we've, we've been working on is a budget-driven dynamic where outcome stat existed on its own. All we're doing basically is taking what City Stat does to supplement what outcome budget does.
So there's one thing called outcome stat. No, I'm, there is one thing added, and it's called basically outcome stat.
But, but instead of focusing on the terminology, what I want you to focus on, Madam Chairwoman, is, it's just about the concept or philosophy of making sure that a system that already exists, two systems that already exist, that make sure that they're cohesive. So when you start talking about why you need resources and budget, you're using the data that's already being collected to back that up. So, so again, this whole phrasing that we're in this dormant stage waiting for some new thing to start and get started, these, these things have already been happening, they just haven't been done in a uniform way. In fact, we're getting calls from other jurisdictions that only use outcome stat and are interested in, in, in City Stat, and want to merge it because it just makes sense. It's just one of those things where you say, if you're already looking at data and how data affects management, and how data affects uses of resources, or telling you whether you need more resources.
Okay.
Why wouldn't you append that to your process of a budget? So that way, during the year, you're collecting data, when it's time to stand up and present your budget proposal, you can have data that goes along with it. You can tell the story of, I started with this, I found that it didn't work over time, I adjusted it, and now I have.
So, and so that's what you're going to do?
That's what we've been doing. We've already had agency heads to train on a process of thinking about how you move forward. We already have had presentations to, to the Cabinet members in regard, in regards to this collective understanding of.
Of, of outcomes and connections.
Of, the outcomes were already, they had to understand that because they had to do a budget, but using data to back up the outcomes in their budget proposals.
So, so you're going to do that, but you're going to keep doing the regular.
Cabs and pothole times and, and how long it takes an ambulance to get someone to the hospital, their wait times, that's what we do, that's what we do. So there's no one, no one's stopping anything for City Stat.
Well, we're, you know, I'm just trying, you.
I'm trying to tell you, I understand, you're asking a question, I'm trying to respond and say, I get that you've got information.
You're responding.
You've got information from other sources, and I'm saying to you, not just here, and anytime you want to sit with me, and, and we'll talk about it, because I just don't want anyone in this.
I don't want to sit with you and talk, I want to talk now where we can sort of make sure, I mean, I'll be glad to sit and talk with you about the family or, you know, but right now, this is work. And the work I have, we have is to make sure.
Right.
That a system that needs to be more friendly and collaborative is still going to survive, and that whatever this, we know Mr. Klein's outcome budgeting ideas, we know what they are, and that those are going to be all lumped together under outcome stat. Am I right?
No.
No.
No, that's, I'm trying to explain, that's, and the only reason I said we can go offline is, you told me that time is of the essence, so what I'm trying to do right now, in a very short way, Madam.
Go ahead.
Is to say that the misnomers that City Stat is morphing into something different needs to be put to rest so we can move forward, because.
But what was the, what was the, you had a consultant who was paid over $100,000 about something, about changing into something else.
No, that's not what he did. What he did was to explain how this methodology of thinking turned a curve and, and collaboration between not just the city members, but private partnerships, where you come together and you start talking about what is really needed by the constituent? What, what are we responding, and what are we striving to, to do? Sometimes a, a neighborhood may want streetlights, and we give them trash cans. So what we want to do is make sure we're really responding to what the citizens need, and, and we're making sure that those proposals that come up in the budget have data to support not only what makes sense.
So if you're buying trash cans you know already because you've gone out there and asked people that it's trash cans they want, and they don't need the rakes and brooms, for example?
Okay. I mean, are you asking me, is that what I was trying to say? I, I understand what your question is right now.
Yeah.
No, what I was trying to say was that, one thing that we've noticed in doing an analysis of how outcome budgeting can become stronger is.
I know.
We've come up with the realization that we need to be more inclusive, and we also needed to have more solid, quantifiable information to go along with proposals. So you didn't have someone just making up a number or saying what they can do when it wasn't based on any facts. And because we have all these mechanisms in the city, meaning surveys, we have the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, we have all these people gathering information, wouldn't it be a great thing to take all that information?
I know, I've got one.
And put it into your budget presentation, so people can know what's going on? We already have budget online.
Okay.
We, we already have situations where the citizen can see.
I give up.
We want to just buttress that information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would like, I would rec, I would, I would like City Stat to begin posting reports again online for the public. Can you do that?
Well, one of the things that the consultant is working with us is, we're doing a dashboard that would be opposed to just numbers that people see or used to see, will be the interactive input of each agency based on what they're doing.
Is that a yes?
It's a yes with some more information.
And are we paying this consultant because we think he's doing something? Has he ever written any of this down in a, on a piece of paper?
He has the software that we're using to put the data, the data online, so he's not, we didn't ask him to come in and give us.
So you, you have the, he is selling us, or he's giving us, or something, the.
Part of the process.
Software to do the dashboard that you're talking about?
Part of the process, in order to make that the budget process coherent and to also be outward facing to the public so they could have something directly from the agency.
So the answer is, yes, there will be reports for the public about what's going on at City Stat.
Not at City Stat, what's going on in the agency.
But it will be on the, City, City Stat will put it up.
Though the agency will, the agency, it will be online, the agency will. No, the agency will, the agency, it will be online, the agency will be filling out that document, and it will be online continuously.
So the agencies are doing this?
There'll be, it'll be a dashboard that you can look at at any given time.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, does City Stat have any role in this?
Well, my analysts now are working with the agencies to put together performance measures, and we're training --
For the agencies?
For the agencies, and we took a train-to-trainer model in terms of, we had the gentleman come in and train my analysts, and they went around and trained the agency.
On the outcome.
On the process of performance measures, turning the curve thinking, and --
So they didn't know how to do that, performance measures?
Well, I mean, they had an idea, but obviously, if you pay, train people --
Well, aren't they analysts?
No, my analysts didn't need to know, they needed to do it for the agencies. They did it for the, they were training my analysts on how to present the information that the methodology --
They're training the agencies how to do performance measures.
On the methodology of this, exactly, so.
And, okay, so that's, all right. So, will you work with your agencies in 3-1-1 to try to collaborate in a collaborative system that's, that works for the constituents?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kleins. If you can stick around, we do have one person who's signed up to testify, I want to make sure he gets a chance. I happen to have a pretty good guess, it's about libraries. We might be asking you to, David Yaffe, are you still here? Now, David, keep it short.
Well, okay.
Oh, okay, third district.
What? What are you saying?
No.
No, I live in, I'm sorry, Ms. Holden left because I live in her district. But I, my heart is in all the districts and the libraries.
We know that, David, and your heart is mostly in the Pratt Library system.
Yeah.
David Schott was a friend of yours, right? David Schott?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's in your district, right. Yeah, yeah, he's a good fellow. Well, good evening, council members.
Good evening.
And thank you, Councilmember Clark, for your procedural assistance.
Say your name.
Well, I want to support the email that Professor Harris sent in. I think that City Stat --
Could you say your name for us?
I'm sorry?
Would you say your name, David?
Yes, David Yaffe. Anything else you want for identification? Okay. I'm in support of the email that Professor Harris sent in. I think that City Stat should return to its maximum effectiveness, and I want to suggest it's important that it should be applied to the library. It's perhaps even more important to apply it to the library than for other agencies because there are not as many checks and balances on the management of the library as there are on other agencies, because if it's independent Board of Trustees, it also so happens that it doesn't have any collective bargaining representation, unlike almost all other public agencies, city and state, and unlike most of the other libraries in large cities in the East Coast, too. So that's another thing that could be a check upon the library's untethered management, but it isn't there. I think that City Stat should trace measurements that fall below levels of effective public service, and where outside scrutiny could move library managers to work seriously and effectively to improve service. And here's some of the things that are below par. Circulation is low. What they call visits, which is just the number of people that come to the library for whatever reason, is low. The number of books on public shelving that is not buried underground, whether you can measure the number of feet of total public shelving, they've decreased a lot, and they might not be restored when the central library renovation is done. Purchases of new items for the collection are low. The de-accessions from the collection are too high, and the hours are too short. Now, even comparisons with libraries in impoverished cities that have suffered poverty, crime, population and job loss, and school dropout rates like Baltimore's or worse, and where the library budgets per capita are less than Pratt's, they do far better than Pratt on these measures. They have less money, but they're open more hours. How do they do it? I don't think they're starving their librarians. Professor Harris mentioned Gary, Indiana, and Detroit, other examples of Birmingham, Alabama, St. Louis, and Milwaukee. They all have lower per capita income, and therefore a lower tax base than Baltimore, but yet, people go to the library more. City Stat could leave to comparative budget and management analyses of Pratt and of the libraries in these other locations. That could reveal best practices that could be implemented here, and bring major improvements in public library service and its efficiency. I'd like to refer all council members to emails that you've already received, maybe tagged with my name, and from an email address, baltimorelibrarypotential@gmail.com. There's a lot of background information on this, as much as you may wish to consult. And please, anybody who wants to, telephone me, I'd be happy to discuss it further. I'm always home in the morning, other times can be good, too. 410-448-0333. I'll give you this, it's handwritten, but it's legible. Let's see, I wanted to make a, yeah, okay, well, this is one thing about why it matters that City Stat works. It refers to processes as well as end results desired. I think monitoring these data quarterly would be sufficient, four times a year, get reports, and --
The library, are you talking about the Pratt?
I'm talking about the Pratt, yeah, other departments may be quite different time sensitivity, I mean, like crime stats, for example, of course. But measurements across time are not sufficient, there needs to be comparison with these other cities, because this underperformance has been distressingly stable for 30 years. It's been, to my mind, a terrible problem, a squandering of one of Baltimore's great assets, with all the good that it could do for people who are deprived of information while they're deprived of everything else. But yet, it hasn't been addressed. It hasn't been considered urgent, the trustees don't put it up there in their strategic plan. I think they should, but I don't think they will. I think they need prods from outside, and you guys are some of the outside that they can't ignore. So that's it. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Yaffe, thank you, and thank you for being an untiring advocate for the Enoch Pratt Library.
Well, I've been untiring since 5:00 right now, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your --
Well --
-- patients, thank you for your presentation. You make a good case.
Let me give this, the church.
Thank you.
That's pretty neat.
I like it.
Pretty neat.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard before we conclude this hearing? If not, I'd like, yes, Councilman.
Just one final comment, I want to thank you for introducing the resolution to bring City Stat here. I think it's a very important issue that we need to hear from Director Grimes, and I'm glad the other agencies are here, but we want to really hear from Director Grimes tonight. That's what it was about. And hopefully, that we will get some good outcomes from this as it moves on. I know we don't have a quorum of the committee to move the resolution, but we'll have a voting session somewhere down the line, and I do want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. Maybe I won't get thrown out on City Stat next time I go up there, but that's quite all right. It was well-intended, the hearing, and your tensions were very much on target for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Grimes, I thank you for being here, and for standing around and talking with us for a couple hours. I hope that you have heard our concerns, and, for the program, and for full-time attention to it, and commitment to it. It is a serious responsibility, I know it's a cabinet position. It's very important to us because it connects to our constituents, use your system as the backup to 3-1-1. And if that starts to fall apart, we're in very deep trouble. It all falls apart. We cannot have that happen. And you've assured us that it's not happening, and we're going to take you at your word, and pretty soon, you're going to invite council members to come to the session, so, and I won't barge in on you, I promise, but I'm sure my colleagues will. And I'll know, because I'll know what's going on through the 3-1-1 system. Whatever it is you're planning for outcomes, I'm sure that our budget director, under our finance director's guidance, will find ways to quantify the big picture, but in ways that will not in any way diminish the attention paid to the nuts and bolts of running a city, basically, the things that people count on and count. Thank you.
Thank you.